We recognize our community partners to
Thank you.
We have access to nutrition and meals available in that. The Operation Backpack Program was served in 2010 to provide food to people in the backpack of all people within the group during the school year. At that time, Operation Food Search provided all the food for the program. Since then, the program has grown to provide food for and local churches and individuals has stepped in and adopted individual schools and provided all the food for the program. The Operation Breakfast Program was started in 2017 to provide breakfast specials for students at Pierce Hall, ensuring that students start the day with a meal. That's up throughout the year to assist other communities. They provide Operation Ed Ed for eight schools in the district and provide food for Operation Breakfast at Pierce Hall through your backpack. Breakfast for Pierce Hall. Here with us tonight, living Lord Lutheran Church, our pastor, Stephen Colley, our president of Pierce Hall, and here with us is our
On behalf of the community, I would like to thank you to all of you, to all of your organizations that put this stuff up and go above and beyond to support our students and our school communities. We know if students are hungry, they're not able to perform their best at school. So thank you for fulfilling that final filling that final cap that we have between the student and their learning. So we just appreciate you and your partnership. That, more than see a couple of others, I think.
So next up is the public comment period. The board thoroughly enjoys hearing from its district residents and employees regarding the district-related activities. So it's provided a set amount of time for residents and employees to address the order during the public comment period. Speakers will follow the requirements of Board Policy 412. There's some comments and notes that are on that PowerPoint that you see. Speakers are asked to model civil and respectful behavior for our students. That being said, President Rice, would you like to call the first name?
First up, we have David Lewis.
Thanks for the time, my favorite student. This being the first ones for going online. I of course did it online and just feedback. And again, can I say, I know I've not figured out how to use the operating brand email address. This is cheap because of the Google system. So they wouldn't let me go any further until I created a Gmail address, which is just what I need one more address. So it really could be simple, so I can just use whatever already have. That's how I was sent this straight forward. So I appreciate that. And also, I spent time talking just here, but also with the city and the board of all. And there are a couple of meetings I've got here. I was talking about the challenges that I'm taking deep in the school district and listening to what you all have to say and any notifications and stuff. And clearly, there's there's needs for those who are doing too. And I spoke to a wall or a group of people with no comment and feedback, and I understand the reason why. But I'm trying to understand, because I know you guys had a meeting with the board of all recently concerning coordination and growth patterns, the impact on school districts and stuff. So how do I go and see that, see what's going on, go out to Fala, a sudden sunshine? Same thing, I just want to talk with you. But I need to look close someplace else to find that. Just real curious because back down in the city and looking forward to everything, teaching with the city. And I'm just trying to see how it works together because, yes. Anyway, thanks for your time.
Okay, now in the public comment period. Next up, we have superintendent comments.
All right. I think I can just have a little PowerPoint here for me. So I am starting to, we're beginning in my first one hundred school days, which has started to happen. It's been a great pleasure to be able to relate to get into our school community, become a part of our school traditions, and it's been a great opportunity for learning and relationships with the students as well. So if those people aren't yet on social media or on Instagram, please do so. If you're a Twitter and you're a head doctor or you're a trustee, I literally do post all day. When I am out in the back of schools or at public meetings, I do share that out so we can kind of give a boost into where we are in the district and while it's happening. So we'd love for you to join along with us. And so since we've had past time, I was gonna highlight everything that's been gone through. So getting into schools is really important to me to build relationships and how it goes, what's happening in our schools and our district. So even doing like the morning announcements at Frontier for a school or working with our kindergarten class and a lot to be a part of their tradition there of putting white handprint on which were tied up for all of the new students that come through that elementary school or reading to our students at our family and church office. What a great pleasure, making it so to join, um, to anyone who gets to work with them.
Liberty High School from six to seven thirty PM. We are going to have a parent informational night on substance abuse. And it's all going to be around what your children are facing today and what you as parents might be facing today. So this could be a great opportunity. It is open to the public and there's no RSVP required, so please join us. Also this month, I was able to join Wentzville Rotary Club and I was their speaker for the day. So I am starting to be able to get out there and talk about the state of the district and talk with our community members. And that's been a great experience as well. That same week, I was able to join the Western St. Charles County Chamber of Commerce and they were a super fun group. I think they hung with me nearly two hours. They had a lot of great questions. We had a great conversation and I think that we have a lot of supporters in the community and we're we're looking to help make sure that we have clear, transparent information for them. Today, I was able to join other educational leaders at Rankin here in Wentzville for the Vision St. Charles Leadership Panel. And so I was able to speak on behalf of education, leadership and overcoming the challenges that we are facing in the world today in in our education arena. And so Rankin, Lindenwood, Lutheran High School, Wentzville and Francis Howell were all represented. I also was asked recently to be on a national podcast, The School District. So if you do like to listen to podcasts, I'd give a shout out to that. You can find it on Spotify or Apple and I hope you enjoy it. Over the last two weeks, we've started facility walks. One of the things that I'm really intentional about wanting to do is making sure that we plan appropriately for the future, that we have long, long range facility planning with growth and development and things like that. And so so far, we've been able to get to five of our schools. Over the next two months, we will get to all of our facilities, schools and other buildings as well. And we're going to really prioritize all of our lists from those items that are already on capital list, HVAC roofs, other critical needs within the school and wish list items. And we're really going to get them all down in one place where we can really start talking about long-term planning and those types of things. We know that we have some beautiful new buildings and we also know that we have some legacy schools that need some love. And so our plan is to really have a clear understanding of what the needs are and to be able to put some solid plans and to get together on how we're going to help be good stewards of our facilities and take care of them. I've also started having meetings with our different municipalities. Last week, we met with the city of Wentzville. Tomorrow, we will meet with Lake St. Louis and we will continue to have similar meetings with all all five of our municipalities. And really, this is a meeting that my office is asked to have with usually it's the city administrator or whoever's in charge of development for the city and talk with them about what current developments do they know about? What do they know might be coming? Where do they see that future development might occur? So that we can really get a good plan in the district on what is heading our way. So as you know, this year, we've opened up North Point Middle School. We moved our sixth grades into our middle schools to free up space in our elementaries. And so we're going to take time this year to really determine our school space utilization and how much capacity do we have and how many more students can we take? And really start creating graphics and communication talking points so that as we're talking with our municipalities, they have a clear understanding of where we are as well. And then as we know where these developments are coming and what schools may may be impacted, it will help us know where we might need to adjust or plan for additional growth. We also are in the process of putting together an RFP for a demographic study. It's been a few years since the district had one and it was prior to COVID with some of the shifts that have happened there. The previous demographic study basically said that hopefully we should be okay for a little bit and our next our next school probably will be an elementary school. So we would like to have, I would like to have more current information based upon where we are today to help begin those projections. And so between the city meetings, looking at our current space utilization within our schools and the demographic study, we're hopeful that we will be able to have a solid plan on where we might need to go for long-range planning. This week, we also had, actually, I don't know, it might have been last week. My weeks are starting to blend together. We had a meeting with our first responders to review our district's emergency planning protocols. And that was a really productive meeting. Our first responders have really become great partners and thought partners to us. And they gave some really great feedback. Our next plan is to take our district emergency planning process to the St. Charles County Emergency Operations Center and sit down with them as well for some more specific feedback. So Frontier Middle School, if you recall, I think I talked about this last month or maybe the month before. Traffic has been a difficult thing at Frontier for a while, so it's not necessarily a new issue there. But with bringing sixth grade back to Frontier, we had more students attending this year and the traffic situation quickly rose to the top. So with that, we jumped into action. Again, we pulled our community partners together to help be thought partners with this with us. And so we are currently on the on the consent agenda today. You're going to see a contract for a traffic study and then all of the other future phases of that. If the traffic study warrants a traffic light for us, they're on double D. We also are looking at the design of our entrance and our parking lot to see if there's any adjustment that we can make to allow the traffic flow to be better. And so we're we're working through that process. Also today, we're going to talk about a contract that we have for the board, board's review today with the city of O'Fallon to take our school resource officer at Frontier, which is currently a part-time contract to a full-time contract. So that that would be consistent with all of our other middle schools and also provide Frontier more safety, security and assistance with traffic as well. And then our Liberty High School families and our Frontier families were notified that starting on November 2nd, or they they the bus times will be coming out, that we're adjusting Liberty High School starting and ending times by five minutes. Instead of starting at seven twenty in the morning, they're gonna start at seven fifteen, which is what they used to do two years ago and for many years before that to allow us to get our buses onto the Frontier Middle School property in time for school to start. So we're trying to make those additional adjustments to help alleviate the traffic congestion and get our kids to school safely and on time. I do want to talk a little bit about transportation and give a quick update there as well. The struggle is real. That's what I'm gonna say. We know transportation and staffing shortages across the board have been very difficult for many organizations, many school districts, but critically here in Wentzville. And so prior to the start of the school year, we were down four drivers and we thought that we were in a pretty good spot. And then right before school started, we actually lost quite a few. And we realized that part of our process is that some of our staff didn't want to tell us that they had other jobs or that they were moving on because they didn't want to lose their insurance benefits. And so that put us at a distinct disadvantage at the very beginning of the school year. And so that's something that we're going to work with as we move forward with next year to try to put processes in place so that that doesn't happen again. We have currently today thirteen driver openings that are completely open. And then we, as of yesterday, had fourteen absences on top of that. So that's over twenty-five routes that our transportation department is trying to cover on a daily basis. And so that's significant for us. That's approaching COVID times when we were in a position where we were talking about shutting down routes. And so for us, we've been trying behind the scenes to put things in place that will help chip away at this issue to make it better. But unfortunately, we don't have any magic bullet or a magic wand that's going to instantly make this process better for all of us across the district. Currently, being fully transparent currently, we do not have any applicants or people in the pipeline for these positions. And when we do get someone, it takes about six weeks to get them fully trained through the CDL process. So that's a struggle. So when I say the struggle is real, the struggle is real. We did this this month, earlier this month, the board approved a mid-year pay adjustment for our bus drivers. for our bus drivers and for our subs, our bus driver subs, to immediately start making a difference and to become more competitive within this space. We also are, just received approval for a new employee incentive. So for any new employee for this school year, for a full-time employee, if they stay with us the entire year, they can earn up to an additional thousand dollars as a new employee incentive. We currently are working with third-party services to do a couple of things. One, we're looking at working with alternate forms of transportation for our out-of-district routes. So we do have students that go out of the district to other schools, other placements. And so we are going to be working with those families and alternate transportation, transportation services to provide those services to those students while freeing up those drivers to drive our routes in district where we desperately need them. We also are using a third-party service, TransFinder, to really do a comprehensive study of our routes to look at where can we be more efficient? They're going to look at things like starting and ending times for schools. They're going to look at different configurations of currently we have middle school and, and high school students riding the same bus. Are there different ways that we can configure to make it more efficient? We should have that result back by the end of November, beginning of December so that we can plan for hopefully second semester and the following year. We also, on today's consent agenda, you will find a lease agreement with Enterprise Leasing that there's a new law in the state of Missouri that allows school districts to transport in ten passenger, or ten-person passenger vans without a C D L. So C D L licensing is very comprehensive and very difficult for some people to get. And when this law changed and also knowing supply and demand challenges that, that the automotive industry is facing right now, purchasing ten, ten-passenger vans was going to take over a year for us to get that. And so working through Enterprise Leasing, we do believe that this could relieve some pressure off of our transportation department. So when we are transporting small, small groups of students for activities, things like that, we could actually do that with, with the vans instead of buses. And again, Enterprise will have a delay but we, to get the vans for us, but we are hopeful that we would be able to obtain them in a much quicker timeline than purchasing for over a year out. So we also have revised our specialized programming that impacted regular routes. So specialized programming that may transport kids to a different school during the day. Some of those students coming back were impacting high school routes. So we adjusted those times to, to relieve again pressure on some of those, those routes. And we are also working with our activities directors to try to work with other school districts to delay the start of our athletic games whenever that's possible. Those schedules are put out way in advance, sometimes multiple years in advance. And so we are doing our best to try to adjust that too, so it's not impacting the dismissal of students. The other thing that we're working on and hopefully will be rolling out soon is C D L training for our coaches, our administrators and quite frankly, anybody else who wants to come join our team. And so, so that could be parents or community members who would like to help be able to pick up some shifts with transportation. And so we're going to offer that weekends, evenings, that kind of thing. And so in that process, if we're able to train our, get our coaches or some administrators appropriately certified, then they'll be able to run activity routes. Or if the coach is already taking the team to a different district for a game, then the coach could also drive the team. And so those are some of the things that we're doing to try to alleviate the pressure that we're feeling right now. We do know that this, none of these things individually are going to fix it. It just begins to chip away and it begins to relieve the pressure. We do have other, other harder choices that we are having conversations about that if we're not able to get the transportation piece in a more consistent, stable place, that we may have to have conversations about potential elimination of routes. And if we do that, it's my preference that we would not touch elementary routes at all because parents definitely need us to help get their kiddos to and from school. But it could be that we may at some point have to say we're going to look at secondary routes instead of transporting students one mile and beyond. What does that look like at one point two, five miles or one and a half miles or two miles? And so we will continue to do our analysis there depending on the route study that we're going to get back from TransFinder. We may also have some recommendations for starting times or other changes. So we do want you to know that we take this seriously. We know that it's frustrating. We're frustrated too. And we want you to know that we are working behind the scenes with as many possible avenues as we can to make this better for our community. So with that, I do want to say that we have a support staff job fair coming up on November 1st. From three thirty to seven thirty P M at North Point High School, we will have on-the-spot interviews for anyone who's interested in any of our support staff positions. I previously mentioned there's a new employee incentive of up to a thousand dollars per person. We have, with this job fair in particular, our current staff, if they refer people to come through the job fair that are eventually hired, they can earn up to three hundred dollars per new hire as a referral incentive as well. And just to be very clear, if individuals have flexibility or they need a flexible schedule, we're willing to work with people. If people are able to sub in our schools one day a week or a couple of times a month, we, we're willing to work with, with individuals. And so the Q R code here takes you directly to our employment page. People can, can sign up and share their information. Just to recap, we are looking for a ton of bus drivers and bus monitors. Currently with custodians, we're forty-five custodian, custodians short across the district. On the board agenda today too, you're going to see contracts where we're recommending the hire of two outside custodial firms that will provide service during the night shift under the supervision of our lead custodians. And with that, that would fulfill the, the workload of twenty-seven of those forty-five vacancies that we have, but we would still have to, have to hire eighteen more to be fully staffed. And so that's where we are currently with custodians. With instructional assistants, we're currently short eighteen in the district. Child nutrition, we're short twenty people. Chautauqua before and after, we have five full-time vacancies, vacancies open and we need substitutes. So if you would like to come sub in our classrooms, sub for drivers, anything like that, we, we would love to have you. The state just rolled back our certification requirements to become a substitute. So if you have thirty-six college hours, we would love to talk with you. And if you don't have that, but you'd like to take a twenty-four hour course and pass an exam with that, we can get you certified there too. So again, we just, I'm just putting out the plea and the plug that we need you. We need great people in this district to take care of our nearly eighteen thousand students. And anything that we can do to have, have you help refer people our way, we would be greatly appreciative. And that's it. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have consent agenda. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Still moved. Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, next up, we have new business. We have first reading of the new policies.
Yeah, there's, so just real quick, so there's no action, but Danielle, it might be helpful just to describe, you know, out loud, just how these updates come to us, the policy provider that we use, you know, kind of what triggers some of these changes, just so it's clear.
Sure. Usually one to two times a year, our policy service, which is Missouri Educational Consultants, M E C, will provide us updates and they will give us recommendations. They will say either it's a mandatory update, it's a recommendation, you know, and all of that is based upon new legislation, new mandatory changes from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education or from the Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education or it sometimes is also pertinent to recent litigation that is throughout the state. And so those updates come to us and then we review them, we bring them to the board and we move forward, forward from there. And so I believe all of these are all mandatory updates based upon recent legislation.
Thanks.
Okay, next up, we need a motion to approve the city of O'Fallon S R O partnership agreement as presented.
Still moved. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to throw out there a shout out to the city of O'Fallon because when I waved the flag in the, in the air of like, hey, we need assistance at Frontier Middle with traffic and safety and security and all of those things, they stepped up right away. They've been great partners. We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago and they said to us, this is the first time we've ever had a meeting with a school district. And it's been a great collaboration and they've been so willing to help work with us and meet our needs. And I'm thrilled that we're, we were so quickly able to come to some potential solutions to help fill the void at Frontier.
Any more comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, with that, we need a motion to adjourn open session.
Still moved. Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.